When I was a little eight grader, my dad kind of stopped us. It's too much to get him too big. So he bought us all two hundred acre farm. Just two miles from where we're currently. So yeah, we had, we had animals and stuff like that. Took a steer to the fair and pigs and my mom and she would. Yeah, it was fun. I think it would have been better. I think if we would have made that move probably three or four years before. It would have been better if you were a little bit younger. Probably. We were tools, fun nights. I started driving, driving around, getting sports. I'm going to go back to the service really quick. Sister, her folks, we were all in those together.
It'll be alright.
I have a senior junior, then there was a gap. She younger one. Was a freshman, so I was driving them around.
At this time, I would like to go to order the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Hartford Joint One School District Board of Education. This is a meeting, uh, can I roll come first actually first, Mrs. Hoffman? Thank you.
Here.
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 Here. I'm here. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the district's business, and it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Any resident district or parent of a currently enrolled student wishing to speak should have filled out a card located on the signing table and given to the board secretary. Mrs. Hoffman, were there any delegations here? No? Alright, at this time, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance, but Dr. Louie is going to introduce us with some of Rossman students.
Yes, actually, Mrs. Krieger.
Mrs. Krieger's going to do it. It says something different, so I'm, okay.
Alright, so with me today, I have some of my leadership students from Rossman. So we have Olivia Eker, Adeline Carl, Ava Bright Kreitz, and Riley Paulson to lead you guys in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three is to consider the approval of the agenda. The agenda notes the board's mission of, we will support our community through dedicated governance, leadership, and stewardship so that our students achieve. It also states our values and expectations as a board in governing our meetings. The purpose of the agenda approval is twofold. The first reason is to verify that public notice has been given according to state statute nineteen point eight four. Mrs. Hoffman, has the meeting been properly noticed? Perfect. The second reason for approval of the agenda is to consider tabling an item or to rearrange the order of the event. Have there been any requests to reorder or remove anything? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as stands.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four is the presentation of student excellence, which is tonight from Rossman Elementary School. So once, now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Billy.
Yes, uh, I have, um, our fifth grade students and fifth grade staff in addition to Mrs. Vogel. And I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Vogel and Mrs. Burke.
Thank you. In fifth grade, we've been working so hard on our opinion writing unit, which was called research-based argument writing. We followed a guided process in which we answered the question, should schools serve chocolate milk? Students researched and took notes on both sides of the argument, chose a side, and planned their argument using the evidence that they collected. Students then wrote five paragraph essays that included their claim, three, and three big reasons to support that claim. They also worked to keep a potential audience in mind and use persuasive tools and techniques to sway their audience's opinion. We had many fifth graders who wanted to make their voices heard by the important people who make decisions for our school. With the help of Mrs. Vogel, we made that a reality.
So, as an enrichment activity to help foster those who wanted their voices to be heard, I worked with this group of students over the last few weeks. We collaborated together reviewing their individual arguments to create a group argument of whether or not chocolate milk should be served in schools. This was a collaborative task where the opinions and reasons that will be shared with you were agreed upon with their group. I was just the recorder of their information. In addition, I shared with the students the reasons the opposing side felt about chocolate milk, of which they then crafted their counterargument. So without further ado, we've got the great chocolate milk debate.
Can you think of one drink that should be served at schools that is healthy and kids like to drink it too? Chocolate milk is that drink. When provided a choice, kids will choose to drink chocolate milk over white milk. And when they drink this delicious drink, they're getting nine essential nutrients. We think chocolate milk should be served in schools because chocolate milk has less sugar than other drinks. It has a lot of healthy nutrients and because more kids drink milk when it is flavored.
We think chocolate milk should be served in schools because it has a lot of healthy nutrients. One healthy nutrient in chocolate milk is calcium. Calcium helps build and maintain strong bones and teeth. It also helps with preventing blood clotting in the heart. Another healthy nutrient in chocolate milk are vitamin, are vitamins A and D. Vitamin A is an important nutrient because it helps fight off bacteria, helps bone growth, and helps with your vision. Vitamin D is important because your, it helps your body absorb calcium. Finally, chocolate milk has protein and potassium. Protein helps build your muscles. Potassium helps protect against strokes and cardiovascular disease.
Next, we think chocolate milk should be served in schools because it has less sugar in it than other drinks. When compared to other drinks, chocolate milk has a lot less sugar. In our district, the chocolate milk served in our cafeterias has eighteen grams of sugar. Soda, on the other hand, has about forty grams of sugar. In addition, sports drinks such as Gatorade and Powerade have about thirty-six grams of sugar. As you can see, chocolate milk has less sugar than other options. Although there is sugar in chocolate milk, there are benefits to this. For example, the sugar in chocolate milk helps give kids the energy needed to get through their day. Kids also have the opportunity to burn off the sugar during gym and recess. Finally, chocolate milk helps athletes. Chocolate milk has a high amount of protein, which helps them refuel and rehydrate. Many athletes, such as long-distance runner Mo Farah, uses, use chocolate milk to help their bodies recover.
Finally, we think chocolate milk should be served in schools because more kids drink milk when it is flavored. When students are given a choice, they tend to choose flavored milk such as chocolate milk instead of white milk. According to the article Nutrition in Disguise, when given a choice, six out of seven students choose chocolate milk over white milk. Many kids do not like the taste of white milk. As a result, they choose not to drink milk at all. This results in kids not getting the essential nutrients that are included in milk, such as calcium and protein. Finally, when not given a choice and kids being only served white milk, there is an increased amount of waste. As a result of kids not drinking the milk, they're just throwing the milk away. Schools that banned chocolate milk saw a large increase in food waste. When chocolate milk was brought back, that waste decreased by seventy-five percent. Also, because kids are not drinking their chocolate milk, the money spent is being wasted.
Heart disease, obesity, diabetes. These are just a few effects of consuming too much sugar. Where is some of the sugar coming from? One source is chocolate milk. When given the choice, most students will choose to have flavored milk, such as chocolate milk over white milk. Chocolate milk is just plain milk mixed with added sugar and chocolate. A lot of schools are currently deciding whether to serve chocolate milk or not. Some argue that it provides the same nine essential nutrients, but we think it should be better if you just drink plain milk due to the added sugars. We think chocolate milk shouldn't, should not be served in schools because white milk has the essential nutrients needed for kids. Chocolate milk has too much sugar and chocolate milk is not healthy for you as a result of the added sugar.
We think chocolate milk should not be served in schools because white milk has the essential nutrients needed for kids. For example, white milk has vitamin D. Vitamin D helps bodies absorb calcium for healthy bones. Another example is vitamin A. Vitamin A helps with vision, healthy skin, and the immune system. Finally, white milk has calcium and protein. Calcium helps strengthen bones and teeth and helps with the movement of your muscles. Protein helps to maintain your glucose levels, build muscles, curse cravings, and boost the metabolism.
We think chocolate milk should not be served in schools because it has too much sugar. Chocolate milk has thirty grams of sugar, which is twenty percent more sugar than both white milk and a mini can of Coca-Cola, which is twenty-five grams of sugar. In comparison, in our school cafeteria milk, there is eighteen grams of sugar in an eight-ounce container of chocolate milk. This is fifty percent more sugar than an eight-ounce carton of white milk. If a child has around two eight-ounce cartons of chocolate milk per day, they're getting to add six teaspoons of sugar a day. In a week, that is thirty teaspoons of added sugar. If children drink chocolate milk every day at school, they are getting two extra gallons of extra sugar per year. Having that much sugar can lead to hyperactivity or sugar rushes. Sugar causes your blood sugar to rise fast. When those levels drop, it is absorbed in the cells, which gives you the hyper feeling. In addition, the more sugar you give to your body, the more sugar your body looks for.
We think chocolate milk should not be served in schools because it is not healthy for you as a result of the added sugar. A diet high sugar, for example, drinking chocolate milk every day can lead to having heart problems, which when, when you consume too much sugar, the sugar converts to a carbon dehydrate, which then converts to fat and can lead to obesity. This can lead to higher blood pressure and high cholesterol, which puts your heart in danger of disease. Therefore, you are at greater risk of heart attack or stroke. Consuming too much sugar can have a negative effect on your overall health. In addition to affecting your heart, consuming too much sugar can also put you in an increased risk for diabetes. Finally, when you consume too much sugar, your body begins to crave more sugar. When you have too much sugar, your body does not realize that it is full. Therefore, you consume, you continue to consume more sugar, which can lead to obesity.
Our opposing side believes that chocolate milk should not be served in schools because chocolate milk has too much sugar. A soda has forty grams of sugar compared to our school milk, which is eighteen grams. Even though there is sugar in chocolate milk, there are benefits to drinking it, such as having the ability to stay awake and get through the day, and the ability to burn off the sugar in gym and recess. The added nutrients and the benefits outweigh the amount of sugar in chocolate milk. They also believe that chocolate milk should not be served in schools because white milk has the essential nutrients needed for kids. Chocolate milk has the same nutrients and vitamins that white milk has, but it's more flavorful and tastes better. If you don't want white milk and you don't have another option, you will not get the nutrients you need to help you grow. Finally, they believe chocolate milk should not be served in schools because the milk is not healthy for you. Chocolate milk has healthy nutrients such as protein and potassium, which helps protect you against strokes and cardiovascular disease. And it also helps build your muscles. The calcium in chocolate milk keeps your bones strong and maintains body strength and prevents blood clotting in the heart. Vitamin A stops bacteria and helps bone growth and vision. Vitamin D helps the body absorb calcium. And finally, chocolate milk has less sugar than Gatorade, Powerade, and other sports drinks.
Our opposing side believes chocolate milk should be served in schools because chocolate milk has a lot of healthy nutrients. It does have the essential nutrient, but it also has an increased level of sugar, which can lead to other issues. All the sugar takes away from the healthy nutrients. Other option, another option with healthier, healthy nutrients could be protein shakes. They also believe that chocolate milk should be served in schools because chocolate milk has less sugar in it than other drinks. White milk is a healthier option that can, that has a lot less sugar. If you do not like white milk, you can also choose to drink drinks that have less sugar, such as juice, flavored waters, or teas. When you drink chocolate milk, you are adding a lot of extra sugar, which will lead to craving more sugar. Finally, they also believe chocolate milk should be served in schools because kids will drink more milk when it is flavored. Despite the fact that kids tend to choose chocolate milk over white milk, they then consuming more sugar than they should. This will lead to health issues such as obesity, type-two diabetes, and heart disease.
In our opinion, we believe chocolate milk should be, should still be served in schools because it has less sugar than other drinks. It has nine essential nutrients, and more kids will drink chocolate milk because it tastes better than white. If not given a choice, white milk is the only option. There tends to be a lot of waste, as some kids do not drink the white milk. But instead, throw it away when they receive it with their school lunch. In addition, when they do not drink milk at all, they're not getting the nine essential nutrients they need. That's because we believe chocolate milk should be served in schools. It has a lot of healthy benefits, stops food waste, and gives kids a healthy choice.
In conclusion, we think chocolate milk should not be served in schools because white milk has a needed essential nutrients. Chocolate milk has way too much sugar and is, it is also not healthy for you due to that added sugar. Our school should provide better options for children who may not like white milk, such as juice, protein shakes, or smoothies. These options tend to be healthier than chocolate milk because there is less sugar and the sugar that is added is from natural resources. Sugar, which is high in chocolate milk, can cause many health problems such as obesity, heart problems, and type-two diabetes. In our opinion, we think chocolate milk shouldn't, shouldn't be served in schools. White milk has essential nutrients kids need. Chocolate milk has too much sugar, and it's overall not a healthy choice as a result.
Lexi McCullough.
I'm Peyton Wamburger.
Aria Shores.
I'm Olivia Eker.
I'm Adeline Carl.
Bethin Wetlow.
Alana Kingsbury.
I'm Andrew Bog.
I'm Jacqueline Keller.
Kerrigan Gates.
So before we end this, um, I just want to say a quick words about that presentation. And then you are welcome to stay, but you are also welcome to leave. Uh, I have seen the chocolate milk debate versus white milk for years. Probably the last decade of my educational experience. I have seen that debate done amongst students. And this was the best I've ever seen it done. So congratulations to our students. You were brave and you did your homework. You had good argumentative points and were very persuasive, which is, I know what your unit was about. And thank you also to your teachers because they did an excellent job making sure that you understood that unit of study and that you were able to have points and articulate those to us. So, well done. You did a great job speaking to a group of adults. I'll just echo that. Thanks all for coming. And this is the time, if you don't want to stay, you're more than willing, welcome to leave, but we'd love you to stay.
I, I did not know that that was.
Okay, we do not have a citizen's delegation to be heard tonight. So number six will be the board president's report.
There's one kind of milk that you didn't try yet. This is raw milk, white from the cow. And the reason this is the best of all three is because during the pasteurization process, it kills not only the bad enzymes, but the other good ones. This has all the good enzymes in it, which is capable of destroying the plaque that builds up in your arteries. Ammonitization breaks up the fat molecules of milk, makes them more easily attach to your arteries. So that's why this is unadulterated. And if you want to include that the next time. Give you more wide range of my reasons.
Don's going back. A little educational seminar there. Tonight, for my report, we just have two quick things. So the first is the WASB member recognition. Both Dawn and Louise were recognized at the last event, and because Dr. Vila was there, I'm going to have her.
Okay.
So, um, in October, on the thirtieth, Louise and I participated in the WASB meeting. It was a regional meeting. And there was a fair number of school board members there. I was very, very proud of our school board. We had excellent representation that night. While Dawn couldn't be there in person, both Dawn and Louise were recognized for their service as school board members. And so as school board members, we all see that they attend one meeting a month. They look at their packets ahead of time. They hear concerns from the community. They bring them back to us as administrators. And they help to make decisions that follow our three school board goals. But beyond that, there's so much more that goes into that, and both of them have been involved at an extensive level, either on the policy review and resolution side of things, serving on more than one board, their longevity on the board, and therefore they were both recognized at that October thirtieth meeting. Louise, Ms. Strunk earned her level one, um, school board member certification. I'll have Ms. Wilk pass that out momentarily. And then Mr. Pridemore earned his level two and three at that meeting. And so we would like to get a photo of them together with the, the rest of the board. So congratulations. My report is that board development tool, that is a survey tool that Amy sent out through email to all of us. It is open-ended, but I would like us to kind of assign a deadline for it, just so that it's not floating around forever. Um, my gut says, can we all get it done by January first?
I thought, I thought there was a deadline on it. She said the twentieth of December, right? I couldn't.
There's no, there's no set deadline. You can take it until June. It's a deadline for your usability. So going, having it done before break would be great. Erin's being gracious and saying, please. If it's not by the twentieth, let's have it done by the first of the year. Is that reasonable? But that's all for that. If someone has trouble finding it, reach out to Mrs. Hoffman. She could resend it, right? Yes, okay. Good. And now we're on to the district administrator's report. Thank you, Ms. Wilk. So we have had our second facilities planning meeting since the referendum in November. And we have gotten a lot accomplished. We have a lot more work to do. But I wanted to share just a very high-level overview of where we're at. And so the last two meetings, Mr. Hamlin has been a part of those. We have been able to look at the special education. I'll call it suite in his first and second grade wing of the building, where PRA has really done a nice job making sure that they listened and heard all of our concerns and our suggestions. They've done a really nice job creating a special education suite that includes speech, a palming room, a sensory room, and a bathroom, so that way there's privacy for our students who need that. So we got to the point of comfort where we feel like the next step is to show it to Ms. Keneely and see what she has to think about it. Uh, the other area that we focused on extensively at Lincoln was art and music. We had talked about where we have the locker rooms right in the middle, the heart of the building, and our music and our art areas are either inaccessible except through the gymnasium or currently are not ADA accessible. And so we're looking at switching those two areas. We had one plan, um, all throughout the referendum process and through our first meeting and today. We learned about some structural, um, issues and not issues, but just where our load-bearing walls are at Lincoln School. And that caused PRA to come up with a new plan that all three of us thought was far superior than the original plan we went with. So we're really excited about that. Because it was our first view of that, we are still obviously going to take another look. Um, but it was a very nice alternative that none of us had thought of previously, but when they had the engineers come out and look at things, we know that we need to make some changes. So that will be more, um, cost-effective than a solution that was the, than the solution that was originally proposed. So that's where we got to with Lincoln. Certainly not done, um, but a good step so far.
Same location. So, just so you know, it's in the same location.
Yes.
Just kind of the layout of where storage would be, where the layout of the room is, just kind of should lay it out this way versus that way. So same location.
Instead of having the storage areas side by side, we put them end to end, which actually will help for sound barrier as well. So, very nice. Um, again, you know, good problem to have. So then we also invited Dr. Agatska to today's meeting, and we gave our first real blush at Central Middle School. And so we know that the big project there internally was making sure that our office was both safe and that we had, um, things that were both welcoming and ADA accessible, that provided workspace for our staff, and that provided storage opportunities. And so we took the design that was originally in place, and we've totally shuffled that and walked away feeling a lot better. Um, so we will have a pass-through window, and then we will also have a door that leads into the office area, not directly into the school building. So a lot of wins with that conversation, which was very lengthy, but very, very productive. The other thing that we talked about was we have some recessed doors at Central. Those will come out of being recessed. They'll change the way the doors swing, and so that will also assist with that ADA compliance piece. And then the third thing that we discussed over at Central was compartmentalizing the building. So that way, when we, especially as we look to bring back more athletics next year, we can shut off or close the academic portion of the building through, uh, We can shut off or close the academic portion of the building through uh, new doorways. Um, or doors that would be set up leading from that main hallway off of the main set of doors to the right, um, where the academic areas are. So that was a lot accomplished today for those two buildings. Uh, we joked with Dr. Bowie that um, we have not forgotten about Rossman, it's just that we have some more um, planning to do for the other two buildings, so that's why they were coming first, so we will get to Rossman. And then the other thing is that uh, we received the contract from the agency last week. And because it was too close to the board um, agenda being released, we decided to hold that. We have sent that off to the attorney to review, Adam and I have been able to review it, and so we'll bring that to you for approval in January. So a lot of information about the facility project themself, uh, themselves, the other thing that I would add. Is that Adam and I have been asked to present at the spring convention. Um, so that way other school districts can benefit from the work and the process that we went through, so that was an honor. Um, do you want me to move on to the second one? Okay, so the second point is my evaluation. And so much like last year, I selected, uh, I completed a self-reflection. And then I met with um, Ms. Wilk and actually Mr. Maitre. Um, so I completed a self-evaluation and I ranked ordered the different um, standards for administrators. What you can see in the first set of columns was my own average rating that I gave myself and um, where I increased. Um, so I went up or stayed the same, yellow is stay the same, green is an increase. And then last year I had ranked ordered them to see which standards I felt I needed the most work. And which standards um, then corresponded to where the goal areas were written. So this year I have done the same thing and I have drafted goals for you around the first standard, which is the mission, vision, and core values. And I do feel like that is the most important one, so I want to start with that. That will lead into one of my reports later tonight. Um, so we have the three school board goals that are going to be expiring at the end of the year, and so I feel like it is very important. Um, and my role as lead learner for the district is that we need to make sure that we are set and we have something in place for next year. I think the three overarching goals that we have are very comprehensive, however, they don't have any performance indicators underneath them. So what you'll hear me talk about later tonight is the, the continuous improvement process. And that will help us re-craft what are those main areas of focus, and I would recommend that we end up with three to five. And then what are the key performance indicators that fall underneath each of those three to five main areas? So I do feel like this is the most important goal that I have for the remainder of the year is to work on this and to successfully facilitate that process with all of you. And you'll hear what that process looks like because I am talking about bringing in an external facilitator, when we get to that later on in the agenda. Um, the next one that I want to focus on is number um, seven, professional community for teachers and staff. So this is something that Katie and I have been working on, but one of the things that we do regularly is we get feedback from the professional learning opportunities that we offer. We also get feedback from teachers through building walkthroughs, through um, the feedback that we're getting in terms of how is the curriculum that we're using working with students? And what is it that we need? It might be academic-related, it might be behavioral-related, it might be emotionally-related. And so Ms. Malter and I have been working on creating not only an academic schedule, and that includes the principals as well, that works for kids and for staff. But also we've been working on the academic calendar, which you'll hear me talk about later this evening, the bell schedule. Um, and then where Ms. Malter comes in is really the professional learning schedule, and then what do Tuesdays after school look like for next year? So that's really what we are going to be working on in some of the artifacts that would be included. The third goal area that I have is around school improvement, uh, just by the title. You can see that that's also interconnected to that first goal that I talked about. And so I do think, this was one of my goals last year, and I do think that we made a significant amount of progress for year one. But the work doesn't stop, it evolves, and so this is that next evolution. And so uh, the goal is to continue to make decisions based off of student needs. And so the artifacts would include there the master's schedule indicating what updates have been made, the staffing that's required. You notice that this year we have three instructional coaches, that was based off of some of our findings last year. Obviously looking at our um, forward and report card data, any screening information, Ms. Malter is going through that right now, and then district assessments. So making sure that all of those decisions are based on data. And then the fourth goal that I have, and I told Ms. Wilk that this is probably, um, I have it written as a goal, it is a genuine goal. But whether it was a goal or not, I would continue to work at it because that's the personality that I have and that it's, um, I want to make sure that I'm continuing to develop my own leadership. So that way I can continue to be able to support the team, so that way they in turn can support their teams um, in the district. The artifacts that I included would be my conference and my network attendance, my participation in the legislative breakfast, um, meeting with legislators, things like that. I've talked to Ms. Wilk about possibly participating in the AASAP um, capstone program. So that would be another opportunity to grow myself, um, and then looking at our admin agendas, because I'm always bringing back that learning to the group, whether they like it or not. Hopefully they like it more than they don't, but, um, so those are the, the four goal areas that I have identified. And if you are in agreement, then this is what you would be evaluating me on at the end of the year.
I like the, I mean, I like all four goals, I agree that the one is a, it's a personal and professional goal to continue that learning. So I don't know that as a board we need to identify that as one for you, but the other three, um, I feel are very much in line with our mission statement and in. Moding meaningful instruction, which requires that, that's going to aim for student achievement more than that, but also requires our staff and team to be engaged in building a good culture and have professional learning and all of that good stuff, so. Some other thoughts that we have on these goals? This isn't anything we vote on, but it is a, we're good with this and then we're gonna lock it in so we can move forward, so. Unless there's any feedback, we got to be available for the next day or so, by tomorrow, um, I think we should move forward with these.
We're talking about a huge. We're talking about. Great performance of the DPA report card.
Though those could be two of the measures, yes. Not the only measures, but yes, two of them.
Those are some of the like key, key performance indicators that we would look at later to, to judge how well we're hitting the mark in those areas. But these are goals specific for Dr. Vialobo, so they're a little bigger than just that one thing.
Well, I noted that the DPA report card. Not too kind to.
I, I would, um, excuse me for interrupting, I agree we have room to grow, but I would also say that that is the only building that went up this year. In a year when most schools went down, um, because of the application factor that DPI applied, so yes. We, we definitely haven't noted that we need to continue to grow, but I also want to recognize that accomplishment that we did grow last year to this year.
Yeah, and I know, I know you weren't here, we did discuss those a little bit more last month, they were in the agenda for the meeting, but we did, we did discuss it.
You can watch the video.
But no, that's fair, and I think that that is one of the indicators that um, we keep track of, I know that. You all spend time looking at those report cards as the Dr. Vialobos, so we'll continue to watch those. I think these are excellent goals though, to move us forward.
Then related, but not um, for me personally, is that last week the WASB announced that their new superintendent evaluation framework is ready to go. So when I met with Ms. Wilk, I shared that I'm not recommending use that right now, but that we use that next year. So um, they do have a session at, on that use of it at the convention next month, so that might be something to attend. And I won't go into any further details right now, except to say that I will be also studying up on this, I can share information and look at the changes that it's making for next year. Um, and then just as a reminder, particularly because we have a new board member, the board did subscribe to this and our subscription ends on June twenty-ninth or June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six. So it would be this year and next year that this model is available, and then if you decide you love it, we can continue the contract. If you decide you paid it and you want to do something else, then it can be updated or modified at that point in time. Uh, the next part of my update is about the state education convention sessions and then the resolutions. So the sessions are all linked in your um, handouts, I went through all of those and I indicated what would be interesting, helpful, and supportive for the work that we're doing. I will also selfishly take a moment to highlight um, my own uh, sectional that is happening on Tuesday afternoon, we are pre-conference sectional, so I'll be there. Um, but that, that's an exciting opportunity to present. And Louise is our board delegate, and not only has Louise received the packet of resolutions that all of you have. She has also been on that policy analy- um, analysis and review committee for the last couple of years. And has, is very acutely aware of each of these resolutions that are going forward, so. She'll, she and I will be talking further about them if we need to discuss anything, but she's ready to take charge and um, represent Harper Joint well on Wednesday of the convention. And then we'll move into district updates. The very first district update is policy administrative guideline, we'll call it twenty-five twenty-one slash twenty-five twenty-one A. Why? When you looked in their pack, in your packet, you'll notice that there was no difference anywhere on the policy guideline itself, remember it's not a policy, it's a guideline. Um, the change was in the title. And so we had it listed as twenty-five twenty-one A, for some reason, I had Ms. Navar look into it, there's no reason. Um, and Neola said that we can change it back to twenty-five twenty-one, which was my request. The reason being is it offers more transparency, if you do a search for twenty-five twenty-one, which is our selection of instructional materials and equipment. Nothing will pop up when the A is there, and nobody knows why that was there, so now it's gone. And it's again a guideline, not a policy, so I'm just able to make that change and disclose that information to you. Um, the next part of the district update is the transportation cost report for last year. And you can see that Adam shared that it's about a three percent um, reimbursement that we received from the state. Uh, Dawn had a great question earlier today when we were meeting, because we are mainly a city community. We were, and we don't transport within the two-mile radius where there isn't a reimbursement, we transport really between two and five miles. That's the lowest reimbursement threshold and it's about thirty-five dollars per pupil, so um, that is a formula that they use. And that equates out to about three percent, which is very consistent with last year. Uh, the transportation request for proposal, this is, uh, this year marks the end of our contract with Go Right Way. And so Mr. Majeris and I have been talking about going out to bid for transportation companies. I will tell you that um, the time has shifted in the past, um, probably when I first started twelve years ago or so as a superintendent. People would not bid, companies would not bid or infringe on each other's territory. More recently, we've been able to obtain votes from two to three different providers, so I do anticipate that we'll be able to get some competitive bids. Which will either allow us to switch to a more affordable provider and partner in education, or it will affirm that we already have good rates. And that we should continue our, our relationship with Go Right Way, so we'll have more information uh, in the future for you on that. Adam, anything that you wanted to add? And then the last thing, I alluded to this earlier when I was talking about my evaluation, the continuous improvement or strategic planning. Uh, we talked about the board goals expiring, I talked about um, the process that I want to use and what that end product looks like. The reason that we waited it until now is because I wanted to have the referendum results in before we started something and then perhaps had a different outcome and had to shift our perspective or our approach. Um, one of the things that is really important to me is that I am a participant in this process. Not the facilitator, because I want to make sure that people understand that this is not me forcing my ideas on someone else, but me being part of the group of participants, giving and sharing thoughts and input. And so the paperwork that you have in your packet is for Damian McCroy. He is a retired superintendent out of Howard Swamaco, which is near Green Bay. Um, extensive amount of experience there, to the tune of about seventeen years before he retired. He was superintendent of the year back in the early twenty-tens. And he also um, has a great record of um, coming in and being able to bring people together. Which when we're going through a process that we have never been through as a district before, that was really important to me. Um, so I think that he'll do very well with our community. Um, we're planning two different events, a community night um, for educational excellence. And that is something that I would like all of the board members and administrators to be at, and then any team members who are able to come. Along with of course, the community aspect, which is our parents and people who may not have a connection to the school district. The night that we're looking at is February nineteenth. And then because as much as I said, we'd love to have our staff members be there, the truth is, is they all have families and may or may not be able to attend that specific night. So I've been working with Ms. Malter and she's been working with the principals to find an alternative time, so that way we can have them come and work with our staff. And the purpose of those meetings would be to share some of the data that we have from our parent survey, from our middle school hope and engagement survey. From our Gallup employee engagement survey, from our rounding conversations that we've had. And then also to ask our, our members, our stakeholders, some questions of, when you think of Harper Joint One, what do you think of? What makes you proud? Why are you excited to be here? And then questions like, if you could change one thing, what would that be? Um, making sure that we're getting constructive information that we can take to move forward, so that way we have a really good understanding of what people value in the community. So that way we know how we can craft those three to five pillars or overarching themes, and then the subsequent KPIs underneath them. Um, after those community sessions and the staff sessions, uh, Damian and I would meet and we will process through that information. I'll work with the administrative team and we will come back to you in May or June, depending on how um, quickly we can put all of that information together. With a, a preliminary plan for you to take action on. That action would be the overarching goals, and then what are the key performance indicators underneath? Upon your approval then as an administrative team, we would go back together and determine what the scaling looks like underneath there, what that rubric looks like, we love rubrics in education. So that way we have very consistent information from year to year of what it is that we are measuring ourselves on, so we can determine if we're meeting our goals as a school district. Um, I also cannot do that alone, I have two of our principals, Dr. Bowie and Mr. Hamlin. Um, they are going to be going to a training, a two-day training to receive information on this process. So that way, not that I'm going to put them on the spot and make them do anything um, that they don't want to. But that way they understand what that spoke looks like from the beginning to the end of the process. And can help us stay on task and on target and make sure that we're hitting that final goal at the end. So, any questions with that?
Is this a strategic planning for all facets of education, building, curriculum?
The entire district, so right now you have.
Curriculum, building, any, anything?
Anything that the community thinks important to us.
Okay.
And so right now, I would, i- if speaking very frankly, I would imagine that we end up with something very similar. To the board goals that we currently have, but perhaps they're parsed out differently, right now we have something about being fiscally responsible to our community. I would imagine that that is a very important component that this community will bring forward. And that will resurface in some way, shape, or form in the new month. Uh, we have student-centered decision-making. I think that we're here because we care about students and we care about their future. But perhaps that's not student-centered decision-making, perhaps that's student growth in a variety of areas. Um, and then when we talk about the safety piece, maybe it's facilities and safety, maybe it's operations and safety. Um, so I can see those same themes from the current school board goals resurfacing, but then having those object. but then having those object, objective benchmarks along the way for us to strive for.
And then you're talking about having it at, any like school, anywhere out in the community?
Likely looking at probably Central just because of the auditorium and because we don't have basketball yet. Next year that would be a problem. But probably at Central for both the teachers and the community, just because that auditorium is a really nice spot for meeting places.
It sounds, I hope the community becomes involved in this. To me, it's a little bit more relaxed than, than coming to the school board meeting and having to wait to speak.
Right.
I don't know, I kind of like it.
Great, thanks, bring some friends. Good, any other questions?
I have a question just there. I read through this proposal. I stumbled across the fact that Damian is using general artificial intelligence. First strategic planning. Actually, there's another generation. I couldn't think of their names immediately. It's called monitated computing. It has the ability to speed up the computing process by orders of magnitude faster than what current computers are capable of doing. Nobody's really built one of these yet, but one is by default. We can't throw it too much faster.
Yeah, I recently heard, and I don't know, I think the principals probably heard the same message. We won't be replaced by AI, but we will be replaced by people who know how to work with AI if we don't keep up to speed with our practices. We're going to move on to our discussion. Starting with the first one, which is the spotlight on learning, which is highlighting our instructional coaches that were previously mentioned in the meeting. So I will turn it over to Ms. Malter.
Good evening. Ryan, you're going to project for us and I think I can wave or wink when we go to the next slide. Oh, perfect, awesome. I am thrilled and really excited to once again introduce to you our three instructional coaches. Tasha Vogel, our instructional coach over at Rossman Elementary, Mike Flynn, Central Middle School, and Allison Stark at Lincoln Elementary. As you know, these three individuals have been team members in our district prior to transitioning into the role as coaches. So they join us with a great depth of knowledge and a whole lot of expertise. And so I'm really thrilled to pass it over to them to talk more with you about their mission, their strategies, as well as their impact on student learning.
So what is instructional coaching? One of my favorite parts of this new role has been going into classrooms and seeing my former students and other students in the hallway also. And they say, what are you doing? Why are you not in the first grade classroom anymore? And I get to explain to them that now I get to work with all of the students in the whole school and all of the teachers and we all get to learn together. So our mission as instructional coaches is to foster educational excellence by supporting and empowering teachers through collaborative partnerships and ongoing job embedded coaching, mentoring and professional development. So our collective beliefs, excuse me, are to make student centered decisions like we've been talking about, is to come alongside teachers in collaborative and supportive, non-evaluative partnerships so we can all work together to make data based decisions.
And tied to our mission is why we believe instructional coaching matters. And so you saw some of the mission statements and part of that. And we thought we'd elaborate on that a little bit here. And that is our goal, our job to enhance the instructional practices of our teachers here through co-planning, co-teaching, modeling, best practices to provide ongoing professional development. And we're going to talk about some of those other opportunities on a future slide. And then our end goal, just like any teacher, any educator, is that we are student centered. Like the end game for us is that we want to enhance the overall experience for our students by improving the instructional practices of our teachers.
With that, we have a number of different strategies that we're focusing on. One of them includes building trust. I feel that this is one of the most important right now. This is a brand new role with our district, so our teachers do need to trust us and we have to have that relationship built with them. We are opening up the door for a lot of conversations with them. And this is, as was mentioned before, non-evaluative. So therefore, you know, we want them to know that they can come and talk to us no matter what. Opening our doors to them, listening to them and then providing feedback with them as well.
And the, some of the other professional development, excuse me, that I alluded to was collaboration. And so you guys saw last board meeting, the spotlight was on our engagement learning walks at Central. But we've also been collaborating with other consortium schools throughout the Hartford area. And so we've had peer mentor review visits to Aaron, Holy Hill, HNR, at Hartford High School, as well as hosting our own at Central and Lincoln.
In addition to building trust and collaborating with the teachers in our buildings, we've also gotten to lead data meetings. So we've gotten to sit down with our teachers and analyze student work and their assessment results. And that has enabled us to tailor our coaching and conversations to the students and exactly what they need in order to best succeed. And we always keep our students and their success at the center of all of the goals that the teachers work to set for themselves.
And finally, we're also continuing with our professional development. That's the development of ourselves as well as our staff. One of the things that we're doing with us, because it's the new role, we're continuing to learn. We've had the opportunity to be a part of a program through CISA, which is the novice coaching mentoring programs. We're working with a former coach through the Fox Valley area as well as other consultants within the area. And it's a chance for us to learn, to grow and to be mentored by Laura Deering. In addition, we are doing a lot of different book studies. We have a book study that the three of us have been working on through this fall. Actually, we're finishing it on Friday. And then we're doing an additional book study with the four of us that we will be finishing probably later on in this year. But it's a way for us to continue to grow ourselves, to understand this role, because it is a very new role with our district. And then to find other strategies for us to help our teachers as well as our students. We've also been doing a lot of in-service professional development with our staff. In the beginning of the year with our new church, new teachers, we offered some professional development where we had small group sessions with them. The small group sessions included classroom management, formative assessment, information and feedback. We also put on a couple of lunch and learn opportunities, talking about Ames Web. We led some Tuesday in-service opportunities as well as some of our in-services through our PD days too.
The work doesn't stop, it evolves. And we heard Dr. Vialobo say that earlier. Don, you have a question?
No, I just have a comment. And I also point out that Tricia Vogel is also in 2024 Legion Teacher of the Year. And here are the things I remember about what I said about her in the press release, is that she's very up to date on social, social media, but civics. And she never misses an election. She talks to the students about the Constitution and why it's important to vote. Because she votes in every election, so that's, that's the reason she won that award.
Perfect timing, because that is a spotlight, right? And great testimonial, because I have additional testimonials to share too. So good timing, Don. Often we ask a really important question during our, our team professional meetings. And that is, how are we measuring the impact? And so beyond numerical data, you can see they currently have worked very closely with 56 teachers on cycles. More to come this year. Beyond the numerical survey data that they're collecting before, during and after their cycles, beyond looking at student work. I had the opportunity to connect with several teachers who have worked very closely with these three individuals over this year to really ask them the question, how has this changed you? How has this impacted your learning or the learning of your students? And you can see here, this was a quote from a fourth grade teacher in her very first year who worked with one of our coaches. She says, seeing the best practices of teaching from someone who has taught in the past and who was able to share feedback was so valuable. The opportunity to co-teach was so great. I was able to see her teach. She came in different times with different goals, talking, planning, observing, teaching and sharing feedback. Another teacher shares, it was more helpful than I ever could have imagined. I don't think I would be where I am at week sixteen without his support. I have done research on classroom management and he targeted that with, with us by working on a classroom management plan. I don't think I would be where I'm at in my classroom management without that particular PD session. I took his suggestions and I'm feeling really good. Students are responsive and most importantly, I am able to focus on the content rather than the classroom management. Another quote from a teacher, this would be a teacher who is not in her first year. Again, our coaches are working with all, all staff and all, or all teachers. This fifth grade teacher has been in our district for several years. And she shares that this coach was able to help me to better understand the curriculum and find better ways to meet students' needs. She helped me to plan a book club unit where, while better understanding the standards to determine student outcomes. We did sessions of co-teaching and that was so valuable. Her strategies to better explain concepts to students made such a difference. So truly, you know, we are so grateful for the impact that we've already seen, the difference that these three coaches are already making. So we're so very proud of you, so grateful for you. And we'll, we'll continue to measure the impact. Again, as Dr. Vialobo said, the work doesn't stop, it evolves, right?
I just have a question. So if I'm a teacher and I'm struggling or just feeling uneasy about a subject or just the day, how does that work for you guys? Like how is your day structured? So like, can, like if they really know that they're going to need help, like fifth hour for some reason, can they call on you that same day and be able to come in? I don't know how your schedules actually are aligned, but I'm just wondering like if there's a teacher kind of in a crisis mode? Because that's what I was hoping this was also part of. I'm just wondering if that, how that works for those teachers.
I hope I can answer like a little bit of this. And I think I'm just going to pass it down the line, just kind of a little bit of our perspectives. I would say absolutely, most definitely. In fact, there have been times that I've received emails because I could be all over the building. I always have my cell phone in my pocket, so I'm always checking my email throughout the day. But if there's something that's going to come up and a teacher emails me and says, hey SOS, I need something right now, I would definitely come without a doubt. If there's something that's happening where I'm not able to be there, I would totally be reaching out. But I can probably speak to all of us that we are there no matter what and we're there to help and support. We have had teachers that have had those situations where sometimes they just need to have somebody listen to them. And there's been many times that I've had a teacher come in, we just close the door. I don't even have to say anything. They just need to have somebody listen to them and share it out. And we're able to be that safe place for them too.
Yeah, I agree. And part of the scheduling is I'll put drop in support. And because every day that I've done this job for the entirety of when we started in August, something has come up unforeseen, unexpected. And to be able to respond in real time for a teacher is really important. So as much as we can, we try to.
I had a teacher just this afternoon at lunch ask me, hey, do you have any time at two o'clock or after that you could stop in and we can look at something together? And like Mike was saying, we've got it built into our schedule. Another way that we make ourselves visible is by visiting classrooms beyond just the classrooms who are in our cycle for the month. So we're able to stop in, have a quick conversation if the teacher is interested in that. And then we're always available for them and they know that they can come to us as those questions come up, as situations arise that they need someone to share their ideas with or bounce ideas off of so that we can be there for them and support them in real time. And then we can also schedule more formal meetings so that we can go into depth and make plans to go forward with that too. Thank you.
So I just want to wrap things up really quickly here with just a final statement. As this is a brand new position and it's brand new both in our district as well as for us, we've been really focusing on the fact that this is an evolving role with us. So our main purpose this year is to learn and grow, to network with others and to support student growth. We're excited to be on this journey and cannot wait to see the continued impact we have with our staff as well as our students in the future.
Thank you so much. If you guys want to come shake our hands, so please come on. I'm going to make you do it too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So great. It's awesome, you can see it already. I love that you put the quotes in. That was really nice to hear. Okay, our next item here is an administrative report from food service. And this Ms. Slitter will provide a brief overview of updates for us. And I think she brought cookies. Is it on?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I did bring cookies. Please eat a lot of them because there's a whole plate of them.
So just a quick update, last Friday, we had our senior luncheon. It was a really nice event, a lot of good community participation. We got a lot of good compliments on the food and our great staff over at Central. So that was, that was great. They had a meal of turkey and gravy, mashed potatoes, stuffing, cranberry sauce. And we did little mini pumpkin fries for them. I think they really enjoyed those. See, food supply has been consistent. There's no shortages that have been affecting us. We've even been able to try a few new items. We were going to try a new one tomorrow, but we've got a, a couple of staff that I need to rotate. So that'll be next month. We're going to do buffalo chicken dip. We'll see about that one. On Monday, we had our food safety inspections at all three of our kitchens. They went really well. Food safety is our top priority. So we've been working really hard in all three buildings, making sure that there were no opportunities for any violations. And we did pass with flying colors. So I'm really proud of my staff for that. And then lastly, we are just anticipating working through the kitchen design in January for Lincoln. We're excited for those conversations and that's really all I got.
Great, any questions for Ms. Slitter? Thank you so much and thank you for the cookies.
Of course.
Our next report is school improvement plan report from Central. So over the summer, CMS leadership team members and administration put together an action plan for school improvement that supports the school board goals and is connected to data collected from engagement surveys. One-to-one meetings with staff and student focus groups. And so back to the question.
Hello, I'm really excited to share our school improvement plan. One of the first jobs that we did over the summer when we met together was to come up with our theme for the year, which is make each day your masterpiece. And we have just done a lot of things around that for our students, including some family artwork and some student artwork that we did at Open House. So that was really fun. Our goals are all, our strategies are all around our, the school board goals. So our first goal around making school safety a priority is we were looking to create some consistency and discipline. And then we had two committees, one on classroom management strategies and one on peer-to-peer relationships. So for the consistency in management, we have two new programs this year. We have Next Path, which is our behavioral incident entry program that we're using throughout the districts. But it's also the place that has our student data for tests and stuff like that. But it's a really nice program in that we can use it to see trends in discipline. We can use it to track student discipline. And again, the trends is just really helpful for us. And then we have our PAST program, which allows us to make sure that students, like certain students aren't congregating in certain areas, making sure that we can keep track of how long kids have been out of class. Uh, making sure that we can keep track of how long kids have been out of class. It's been a really nice program for us to track passes as well. Um, the committee on classroom management, which our instructional coach, uh, Mike is one of the co-chairs of. They have been working on helping support each other around managing their classrooms. And one of those pieces was this CHAMP's chart. Um, so everybody in the school worked on these as a department. So kids see these in every classroom. They know what's expected of them for every single aspect of the instructional time. So that has been really helpful. It's one thing they've worked on this year. Um, and then our peer-to-peer interaction committee, which is our largest committee and our most excited committee. Um, they have been working on, how can we make sure kids are working together better? One of the things they worked on was making dances more inclusive. So this is a picture of the first dance this year where we had, um, in addition to the regular dance music, we also had, um, bags, we had board games, we had coloring. It was the most amazing dance that I've ever seen at the middle school. So it worked out really well. We had great attendance. We had tons and tons of people volunteer to supervise. And again, an amazing dance overall. And we're also, our next step is to work on a peer mediation program. So we've been in contact with the high school to see how they've done their peer for peers. And, um, we've got recommendations of students, so we're getting that started, so that will be really exciting. Uh, BLT has also been working on a peace path, so that will be an interesting progression to see how that goes along. Whereas the second goal, I'm making decisions that are student-centered, a couple of our strategies. Are revamping incentives to make sure that we're inclusive. Um, working on executive functioning skills and increasing student engagement and learning. So for the first one about being inclusive, we have revamped our awards assemblies to be grade level assemblies. And, um, so we can do it in the auditorium, so it has a nice, nice feel to it, nice community feel. Uh, we've worked on adjusting the handbook to make our end of the year incentives more inclusive. And then we have pop-up parties, which we had last year but didn't have as much consistency that we wanted. So now every grade level has, um, pop-up parties and they have, we have some, um, constraints on what they do. Eddie might, you look like you might be wondering what a pop-up party is.
Yeah.
Yes. So what it is, is we have, like, one of them was being prepared for class, was the theme for the quarter. So teachers had a rubric that they were using to measure students on if they were prepared for class. But the students don't know when the party is gonna be. So the teachers might decide that they're gonna do it, uh, October, the middle of October. Kids don't know that. So then they just randomly pop up, surprise, we're having this party, and these are the kids who earned the party. And they do fun things like water balloon fights and stuff like that. So fun things that get everybody involved. Um, and then we have, as you saw last time, engagement learning walks is what we're really working on for the engagement. Um, for goal three, uh, promoting fiscal responsibility, I've been having regular one-on-one meetings with all of our staff. Uh, we have a committee for positive publicity, and then we've restructured our team time to include, um, different activities that that teams need to work on, including, um, our work around, uh, Dr. Dickey. And you'll see more of that in February, so I don't want to give away all of the secrets there. And so the, um, positive publicity committee, also very excited. All the committees actually are really excited, but um, this one, they are putting on a display at the library in January and February. Uh, they showcase the student work. So very similar to what we did with Art Show last year. So we're using those same boards, um, teachers have submitted student work, and they're gonna put it up at the library for a month. So that's really super exciting. And then, of course, I work with Dr. Dickey, which again, I don't want to give away any surprises for for February. What questions do you have?
I'll just comment on Dr. Dickey. My daughter was so excited that he bought Culvers for them.
He did.
I was like, what? Yeah, they were super excited. He, they said they had a really, he was very, yes, it was awesome.
He did demonstration lessons and we had a jam-packed room of teachers to see the two lessons. And the sixth grader, um, classroom, he did buy them Culvers and they were very excited.
They were.
He was like a superstar, actually, like, kids would come up to him in the hallways and introduce themselves and shake his hand. And they got his autograph. And someone was like, that's the guy that's on the posters. Yeah, that's the guy.
That was very, very good.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, next item for discussion is the academic calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Hey, so there is a calendar included in your packet. However, we have one change, um, since I sent that to you. Because I met with the administrators last week, or two weeks ago Thursday, and I met with the HBEA on Thursday right before we met, and then there's one small change, so I'll reference that today. And then, um, pending any major concerns, I'll bring this back to you for action in January. So first and foremost, Hartford Union High School and Holy Hill Area School District are done. Their calendars were approved in November. Their calendars are quite different from each other. And so, um, our district worked with Aaron and then we brought Honor into the conversation to try and align as much as possible between the two existing calendars. So we have some things in common with the high school, some things in common with, um, Holy Hill, which gives us some advantages because of the city, but then also gives us some advantages because of the K-eight uh, environment and the possibility of working together and to collaborate. The biggest change between last year or even this year's contract and what is being proposed for next year is that right now our teachers have a one hundred and ninety-three day contract. That is the highest out of all of the Hartford area schools. Um, the average, not the average, the median would be a hundred and ninety-one. And so I am proposing that we move to a one hundred and ninety-one day contract instead of one hundred and ninety-three. I've looked at this year and I've also looked at, um, when I say this year, I'm talking about twenty-five, twenty-six. And then I've also very early preliminarily looked at twenty-six, twenty-seven to make sure that we wouldn't come down and then need to go back up right away because that would not be good, um, culturally. So what is the trade-off or what is the exchange? So I talked about the number of days that our contract is for teachers. But what I didn't share is the school day. So the school length at the elementary level, we have the least amount of time out of any of the Hartford area elementary schools. Um, by a pretty significant amount, uh, about fifteen minutes a day. And so, um, our middle school is the third highest or the second lowest, uh, in terms of minutes, but it's much closer in alignment with the other area middle schools. So currently, we're at four hundred and ten minutes and then four hundred and thirty-eight minutes. Um, what I have proposed in this calendar that I'm putting forward is that we add ten minutes to the elementary level to bring us to four hundred and twenty minutes a day. That still leaves us at the lowest number of daily minutes out of all of the Hartford area schools, but it is a significant increase for us. Um, and then at the middle school level, I'm proposing right now a maximum of a twelve-minute increase per day. And the reason I say, um, a maximum of twelve minutes is because I've asked Mr. Majeris to reach out to Go Right Way. Right now, we're really locked between morning transportation and afternoon transportation. And so we have very little wiggle room for the middle school since that is our longer day on both ends. So we're trying to figure out, do we have any flexibility to move things up or not? And so that, um, will change, but I told the union when I met with them last week, I would rather propose this to you. It is the worst-case scenario, perhaps, if we call it that. And if I'm able to do something better after we hear back from Right Way, great. But if not, I'm not proposing a solution that you like and then coming back later and saying, and now I'm adding five minutes to it. I think that's not a good way to move. And so, um, what that would do is that would change the middle school, um, to be the highest for, um, instructional minutes. And so I think that, um, particularly at the elementary level, one of the things that I've seen is that our teachers through the peer review mentor grant process are very eager and excited and wondering and very curious about how other districts are managing to get in all of the things that they do. And it's because we don't have the same amount of time. So, um, this would assist our students instructionally. And when I calculated this out, at the elementary level, those ten minutes a day would result in about twenty-nine hours of instruction over the entire course of the year. If we were to go with the maximum, um, those twelve minutes a day at the middle school, that would add almost thirty-five instructional hours for the year. If I'm able to do what I would like to do, um, but haven't, uh, provided that anywhere yet because I'm, again, don't have that answer from Right Way, we would be adding about twenty hours. So still adding time, but not as much time. And so it's a win-win, I think, for our educators to have two days less in their contract. And it's a win for our students because we have more face-to-face, more contact time. Teachers, we have the same eight-hour day. It's just that the hour would be allocated differently than it is right now. Um, so, uh, that's one of the things that Dr. Bowie and Mr. Hanlon and Ms. Malter and I have been working on as well. So that's the biggest change is noting that one hundred and ninety-three day contract to a hundred and ninety-one day contract. Um, the other things on here that I would point out to you, and I won't go through everything unless you have questions. Um, the calendar does work out nicely to start in September next year, so we would be starting the day after Labor Day. And then you'll see on your calendar that I had numerous days marked as possibilities for family night. And Ms. Malter emailed me yesterday, I believe, uh, and said that they think they've narrowed it down and we would be looking at the twenty-fifth. Is that accurate? So I would change that for the January board meeting. Um, and the reason that we had four nights is we were trying to figure some things out, but we're looking to do this all together um, as one big Hartford Joint One Community, um, Family Night. So we're looking at that being on the twenty-fifth. October, we got a lot of great feedback on how parent-teacher conferences and the early release for our team members on that Friday worked, so we plan to keep that same structure. November third is kind of a random off day. Um, the reason that I have that in the calendar as a professional learning day for our staff is because the high school actually has both Monday and Tuesday off, and so I felt like that would be a low attendance day for us if we didn't have, also have a day off. Um, so they have Tuesday off as well. We only have Monday off for students and it's a professional learning day for staff. We also got a lot of good feedback on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, having that off, so that is also reflected in the schedule. Next year, winter break, um, the way the holidays fall, it would be a full two weeks at winter break. So very nice for families who are traveling and hopefully will eliminate some of the attendance issues that we have when we have a shortened week. Um, the next biggest discrepancy and the change from your calendar to this calendar that you'll see in January is January nineteenth. January nineteenth is Martin Luther King Day, and we traditionally have not had that day off. Uh, I have talked to a couple of parents last year who had hoped that we would have that off, and I told them we would take that into consideration. Um, Hartford does not have that day off, but Holy Hill does. And so, um, Holy Hill, Hartford Joint One, Aaron, and possibly Honor, we are all looking at taking the, um, the nineteenth off so that we would have collaborative time together and then also be respectful of the holiday. February, conferences, um, mirror what we have this year, but they're a little bit later. Simply because if we had them during the seventh week, I'd like to have conferences the seventh week of the trimester because it's a good time for formative feedback for families where you still have an opportunity to make a change in supporting your student, and your student can catch up if they're behind, whereas if we have it at the end, it's a summative and it's done. You know, it's a, it's just a post-stamp of this is what you got, not this is where you're at, but this is what you can do. So I like to have them in week seven of the trimester, however, because the middle school is on quarters, if we had had it in the seventh week, teachers would have had their kids for one week at the middle school level, and that wouldn't be a very, um, much a waste of time. And so that's why we moved them down a little bit. But also, by moving them down, actually creates a really nice mid-winter break for our families. For our teachers, it's not a break. We do have proposed professional learning time, but it is an opportunity for them to, um, learn themselves instead of having to be on the stage for the kids. In March, uh, we currently have the, uh, spring break scheduled for the thirtieth through the third. That aligns with the high school and with Holy Hill. Um, however, we also have the Monday following Easter off. The high school does not. They have the Friday beforehand off. And Holy Hill has neither the Monday or the Friday off. They actually have a different day in March off. So that's one of the areas where we're different. But this is an opportunity for families to travel if they need it. Um, we have the May twenty-second day in common with what we are doing this year. So I'm hoping that that is a large success this year because I've included included it in the calendar for next year. And then we are looking to end on June ninth. One of the requests by the union was that we attempt to end the week before. And so they wanted some time to get feedback from their teachers before coming back to me. And so it's possible that in January, we may have come up with something slightly modified. But for the most part, this is the calendar that we're looking to bring to you. Uh, and the days work out for the most part very nicely in terms of consistency among both the quarters and the trimesters.
A lot to consider in the calendar. It doesn't feel like it should be this much, but it is. So kudos to all of you for working through it. I personally like the idea of the decreasing of two days and yet also adding some instructional time for the students, I think, is um, a good idea. I didn't realize we were the lowest in the area, so. Um, our last thing on the discussion docket for tonight is 4K programming for twenty-five, twenty-six. Changes are being proposed for the 4K programming, specifically the off-site classes becoming onsite.
So before I turn over to Ms. Canely, um, last year, when I first started here, I had reviewed with all of you the survey that you completed about your budgetary priorities, um, that you had done the year before I came. And so we know that the camp stipends were at the top and that co-curriculars at the middle school level were next. And underneath that was 4K. And so this year, or last year, actually, I charged Ms. Canely with exploring this, investigate. What will this cost us? What are the benefits going to be? And I told her that by December, I needed a proposal. And so she has done her homework. She has met with Mr. Majeris. She's met with, um, different people in the community. And so I wanted her to have the opportunity to share the proposal with you. And then, based on your feedback tonight, there could be modifications for January. And the intent would be if the board is inclined, that we would bring it back in January for approval. We would also be communicating with our 4K centers, so that way they're aware. And just as a precursor to that, especially Barb, because you weren't on the board at that point in time. We did communicate with and convey to our 4K partners last January, Mr. Majeris, Ms. Canely, and myself, that we were considering bringing 4K back on-site as a possibility for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So this will not be a surprise should the board move in that direction.
Thank you. It's definitely been a joint effort. Mr. Majeris has been super helpful, um, Mr. Hanlon and Dr. Bowie have also really, um, been a great kind of committee of listening ears and troubleshooting, um, so it's been really a joint effort. Um, some of the, um, things that I want to highlight in the document that I shared for you for your board packet. Um, some of the positives that we're looking to, um, do with this change, um, sometimes kind of the first little point. Sometimes we do have students who have some safety or behavior concerns off-site and it's hard for our teachers to not have kind of the wrapped support that we have within the school buildings, um, to be able to support them and support those students and support the families in that way. So getting them closer, um, to our support will really help with that. Um, streamlining communication and collaboration between parent professionals, 4K and kindergarten teachers, other 4K teachers, um, if they're in the same space, um, is what we're definitely looking for as well. Um, we're hoping to get families and students really engaged in Rossin in particular, they're already at Lincoln, so they have the opportunity to really get engaged with the community. Um, to even increase that in Lincoln, um, and bring that to Rossin, so they really, you know, enter 4K and feel a part of wanting to stay here. And, um, you know, kids being able to transition more smoothly than they've had going from off-site to a kindergarten classroom, that's a whole day in a different building. Um, the other thing we talked about is professional development for 4K staff. There's a lot that happens with Lunch and Learns and On the Fly and Coaching. And there's just an added kind of layer that we need to think through when they're off-site versus onsite. They are obviously involved in our Tuesday, Tuesday PEs and other things that we do after school, but kind of On the Fly things that happen during the day. Um, those opportunities are missed from off-site. Um, the cost that we would be saving annually is noted there, mostly from rental fees. Um, and then the other thing that we are looking to kind of put with this proposal is offering families and students wrap around here with the Um, and then the other thing that we are looking to kind of put with this proposal is offering families and students wraparound care within the building. So that is another layer of trying to meet our family needs of when we looked at the survey data that we shared in the spring. Um, when Tara and I had called families who are open and rolling out. Um, when we looked at the programs that they're open and rolling out too, we looked at, okay, what are they offering that we're not? And some of those major components were the wraparound piece and having families be able to drop off for the day and, and pick up and not have to worry about that midday mark, which is, it's hard for working families. Um, and so that's something that is part of this proposal as well. Some of the challenges for sure are transportation, and Mr. Majeres and I have worked closely on trying to dissect what we can and cannot do with transportation. Um, the goal of that is still be offering kind of a transportation section at each building to kind of consolidate those kids that might need that, to decrease the number of routes, um, that we can. And then obviously changing the schedule to make sure we're starting and ending the day with the school buildings, so those kiddos could just dump all the transportation. Going to school and going home, it's really those midday routes that is at cost. Um, the other, you know, strength connections with our community-based sites, we don't want our community-based sites to not feel connection to our district and not encourage their, you know, our future students to have a positive connection with us. So we're also working with those, um, community-based sites on transportation, possibly splitting those costs and looking into how we can still ensure that those kids are still getting to them. Um, if that's something that parents and families desire. And then navigating the wraparound care, um, obviously adding staffing for that would be another additional cost. Um, we'd be looking to hire, um, care professionals to support that. Um, students who would need wraparound care would be involved in AM session of that building, and then they would stay for the afternoon. Um, they would go to, you know, lunch with their, with their peers, go to their kindergarten classes, um, and kind of function in the, in the building kind of for the wraparound. Um, other things that I'd like to kind of highlight, um, I think I talked about the most things. Special education, um, is one thing that could, uh, look a little different. Um, right now we have students in the Lincoln PM section only because we have that teacher who made the early childhood section in the morning fair, and then she'd do the afternoon section. And that necessarily wouldn't change a ton, except that the students would be offered the ability to go to special education, have special education services within their home building. Um, which the Rossman families have really been asking for, Rossman teachers have been really looking to see some of these kids before they show up in kindergarten. Um, and so that teacher would then be going every other day from the Lincoln site to the Rossman site, and a care professional would be working, um, opposite her. And they would have some collaboration time each week to make sure that the services are streamlined and, and appropriate and meeting children's goals. Um, so that we're really excited about, some things we've noticed, um, with kiddos with IEPs, if they are at early childhood at Lincoln, 4K at Lincoln, then they tend to stay at Lincoln. And really we want to make sure that we're offering those services and balancing the needs, um, at both things. So giving them that opportunity to be there would be great. Um, some of the things that we're looking at to kind of track and evaluate how the program goes. Um, we're looking to look at, you know, parent and staff surveys, you know, how are they feeling about engagement, connectedness, um, that means a transition into kindergarten, things that were qualitative data that we're hoping fills up. But something that we'd like to make more quantitative at some point. Um, obviously enrollment trends, hoping to keep our kiddos and decrease them opening up and even grab some of them roll in from other schools that might see our program as more appealing than their own at this point. Um, and then looking at some of the academic data in the future, um, you know, do we see our kids scoring better because of a change that we've made? Not sure if it's going to really make correlation, but it's something that we'd like to track and monitor as well. Any questions or Tara jump in if there's something that I didn't touch on that you wanted me to?
I think you covered it.
I just wanted to add one comment, which is that if the wraparound care goes well and does become a popular thing, there's a, there's a small cost to the families for that. But that could help to offset any cost of this program is costing the district right now, which, then I think you're really serving the families and hopefully making it a very cost-effective. Plan for us, I do think it's a win-win for everyone to have it in the building.
Great point, we did look at, um, all the costs of the surrounding programs, and this was definitely much more comparable and helpful for families, so.
I think it's great that it's being offered because I know that I've, I've heard from families who ask about it. And, and to your point, working families need, oftentimes need something, and if they don't have grandparents or someone to help out, it's challenging. So next month, um, what would I have done?
Uh, as I recall, we looked at this in the past, the number that was thrown out was about two hundred thousand dollars additional cost to the district. So, that holds true. I know we get extra money from the state, but it's not anywhere near the amount I'm arguing.
So Dawn, I think if I'm understanding your question, you're talking about the number that we shared in the past was higher than the number that Alex shared with you right now?
Yes.
If that's the question, part of that is because Alex and Adam did a nice job talking to DPI to figure out what transportation you were actually responsible for. And so initially we thought that if we brought everyone back on-site, we would have to require, um, transportation for all. And what we were notified is, is that we have to offer some transportation. And so the method that Alex has talked about increased us from, uh, by one section versus three sections. So that's a huge price differential. And then in terms of state aid, for 4K, the reimbursement is not the full reimbursement that we're, not reimbursement per people amount. It's not the full amount, um, we can either do a smaller amount, or we can do a sixty percent amount if we do additional things outside of school. So it's not a full yet, um, however, they continue to bring that back to the legislature to review. So my hope is that at some point that would change at the state level and then impact us beneficially, but we're not there yet.
But I agree with Dawn, in the past it was a bigger number, and you guys have gotten that number down substantially even from two hundred thousand. So I do feel like this is a very doable and important step for the district that I think sets us up for future, future things. That we currently, right now, have very little infrastructure to do them with.
Uh, are we bringing any of the teachers that are teaching 4K right now at these satellite locations? Are they going to be brought into the program here?
Yeah, so that would be the goal, is to just take the current teachers that are off-site and move them onsite.
They would just have more support than.
They're currently our teachers.
Yeah, they're still our teachers, they're just teaching in and not our buildings.
Right.
We definitely talked about it, I think that's why that, um, meeting last spring was really important, winter, when we talked to them about the potential of looking into this. Um, each of the directors kind of, I mean, they understood if I were doing it, we had kind of the funds on, you know, kind of to stop decisions, this is how it would benefit our students and our families. Um, but I think that crucial next piece of making sure that, um, you know, if the families do want their students there, that we're working with the wraparound care that they need to provide. Between the Dream Center, Sycamore Tree, um, to make sure we're working hand-in-hand with them to offer that.
I mean, part of the issue, part of the issue that we have is it's a new group every year. So we don't know exactly what we're getting when, when they come, we don't know where they live. So we, the transportation piece is a little bit unknown. Again, wh- what, where they actually are in our district, Rossman side, Lincoln side, we don't know where that kind of goes. Um, and so, you know, some of the things we just don't know, we- whether Dream Center, uh, Sycamore Tree, somebody else decides to develop a 4K program because we're making a change. Again, we won't know until it happens, so there's only so many pieces and parts that we can predict and quantify. And some of it's going to have to be, again, kind of wait and see with each group. I mean, we know where the students are today and s- some of their characteristics, but again, this is the first group we get to us every year, so it, it's just different every year. We don't even know, I mean, the number of students has varied. I mean, we've had as many as a hundred and thirty or forty 4K kids at one point in time, and this year you're at. So it just, I mean, again, there's a lot of, there's some parts of this that are just inherently unknown. So how many kids want to sign up for wraparound care, for example? We won't, we won't know, and you can't ask the group that's here now because it's irrelevant to them.
Yeah.
Alex, I have more kids.
I thought my building's done.
So if I'm not mistaken, P S already has a 4K program, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, there's already programs in Hartford, all we're trying to do is obviously be a player in that. And, and that's what I obviously requested three years ago when I got on this board, it was a passion of mine. Because I'd been through the experience of not having that wraparound care and not having a 4K opportunity. Um, so I'm very, very excited that this is hopefully coming to fruition for me, um, and for my constituents that wanted it. Um, also I just wanted to confirm for Rossman location, it is, those two rooms are the ones we built, right?
No, that's first grade wing, these two classrooms are in the kindergarten wing, I believe, right?
Correct, so it's not the new, it's not the new addition.
No, but they're, the kindergarten classrooms do have a bathroom between the two that's shared with the small little toilet and things.
Okay.
So it's built for.
So it's built for 4K, but it's not the new addition we actually did.
No, that was a first grade, that was a specific first grade wing addition that's on there, which is a little different.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Good question. So board, I encourage you, if there's more questions that come up between now and January, to bring them to Ms. Canely or Mr. Majeres or Becky V. Lobos. Because this is going to be a, an action item for us next month. Good. Well, that brings us to our action items of this month. Um, our first item is nursing services and medical advisor contract. To maintain compliance with the Nurse Practice Act, we have been contracting with Pro Health Medical Group for nursing services. This is a rolling contract which includes emergency nursing services and medical advisor agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a contract for nursing services and medical advisor from Pro Health Medical Group Incorporated.
I'll second.
Thank you, Barb, can I have a roll call vote?
Mm-hmm. Barb?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number two is Gagel Reach-Out Contract. Gagel Reach-Out is a comprehensive crisis helpline designed to provide immediate twenty-four-seven support for children and adolescents. This service connects students with licensed counselors or therapists who can offer assistance through text, chat, or phone calls, addressing any concerns they may have. The service is also available for parents and teachers who wish to discuss concerns about their students. Parents will have easy access to the service through a link on the district website. Gagel Reach-Out offers a cost-effective and accessible way to provide ongoing mental health and crisis support for students and those who care for them. This service is designed to ensure that students are not only able to access help when needed, but also able to maintain their privacy and anonymity throughout the process. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Gagel Reach-Out Contract.
I'll second.
Then you just.
Yeah, if I could.
It sounds awesome.
Could I turn it over to Ms. Canely to describe it a little bit more for you beyond what description you have on your paperwork?
Yeah, so, um, I think throughout the years, you know, we've been constantly kind of looking at different things, um, to try to bring to our students and our families. And honestly, nothing has been like that just right fit yet. Um, but this came across, actually Tara saw it, I went for district administrator conferences, um, brought it back to ask to look into. Um, they have two prongs of kind of their service. Um, one is like actual, you know, scheduled therapy with kids, and then there's this reach-out component. The scheduled therapy with kids, um, honestly was basically not the best decision for us at this time. But the reach-out component was not, was where we could have made that decision and still be physically responsive. Um, what we're really excited about is kind of that twenty-four-hour access. Um, our students, I think, feel very comfortable, um, talking to trusted adults in the building, um, when they are having something that's going on. But being able to reach out to someone who is specialized in adolescents, trained, um, at nights, on weekends, or holiday breaks was really important to us. Um, if that listening ear for, for the kiddos. The other thing that we really liked was, um, the venue with how you can reach out. So when I talk to the company, most of the time, kids are either texting or using kind of chat. It feels, um, less, less evasive to be able to just say, hey, I'm struggling with this, can you help me? Um, and so we really liked that piece of it. Um, the other thing that we really liked is, um, the kind of the connection with the school coming through and the, and the school and the district. Um, so we get a monthly report on things that students are sharing or having struggles, struggles with. So then we can analyze that data and try to be more proactive on how we do things within the buildings. Um, and then also if a student does divulge who they are and we do have some concerns, they'll also touch base with our community-based counselors and say, hey, can we put a student support plan in place? Can you check in with them when you're at school? Um, we're really just trying to catch some of those kids that may not be showing us those externalizers that are having the behaviors, but more than internalizers that we may be missing. Um, to try to get them wrapped tighter and have some support, um, at all times.
And remind me, I think Tara told me that it's a, like an icon, right?
Yeah.
So it's going to be, will be automatically put on every laptop for the kids, obviously that's, I know only, um, sixth, seventh, and eighth right now. Because we don't have, fifth grade doesn't have laptops yet, do they? Like full-time?
So it'll be on all the fifth, eighth grade laptops, but on the website, there will still be like an icon that you can put on. If it does it at home, they can still do that.
And is that like an Apple, like, is it a download that they can do through Play Store? Like, I'm just wondering, like, if they want to have it on their phone, is there a way to do that too, so that, you know?
They would just, so the phone, we actually give them, we get a local phone number, so they already give us a two-six-two number.
So that's like the chat number?
Within their phone, and then they can chat to take a chat. Um, they already, Ryan has already made us beautiful posters that have, um, like the QR code, um, that kids could also scan and then put the chat right into their phone. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention, oh, so like on your browser, where you have a couple little icons on the top, so we're having the icons be like open the browser. It'll also be just sort of like their club page when they want in. Um, and then there'll be a link on the website if they can, um, you know, see that on there, or if they're on the desktop at home and they want to chat, then they can just go to our, um, website. The other layer that I wanted to make sure, they were also very vocal about supporting families and parents. So, um, parents can also go on and chat and say, hey, my kiddo was really struggling, her and her boyfriend broke up, or she's doing some self-harm behavior. Like, how can I support them? And they will absolutely help and, and chat with them as well if they give them some resources at home. Um, so that was really exciting too, as a, as a rep for our parents.
And then that, so the cost per student is two dollars per student, that's whether they use it or not?
Correct.
Perhaps, okay. And then that total amount is not to exceed, or?
Yeah, so they can use it as, as much and how, as often as they would like. I also specifically asked about like, do they get timed out for like a certain amount of time, thirty minutes? And they said, no, you, you add, actually their average follows about forty-five minutes, or that actually like interaction, they're having it about forty-five minutes long. But we could continue to keep going on. Um, obviously we want to make sure our students are using it responsibly. Um, so at following board approval, we do have counselors ready to go into the fourth, fifth, eighth grade classrooms to talk through the kids on what it is, when you should use it. When you should actually just come to me as their counselor instead, um, and, you know, things that would be appropriate or inappropriate.
And I'm assuming if they would say or do something really inappropriate on their, you know, for example, going to bring a gun into school.
Yeah.
That we have the authority, like, they will flag it, they'll let us know, right? So it's not confi- I mean, confidential, but when it could be.
So they, um, I've given them kind of a contact list of people in those instances, either whether it's maybe a suicide situation or something to that, um, safety extent. Um, and they all have, they have different thresholds on when they'll call the local PD, so if given them that number. Um, myself as an administrator, school counselors if it's, you know, during the day. Um, but yes, they know kind of that threshold, and then they, they do collect some data that comes in, maybe not just one, but their web browser IP address. If they're using the phone, they do collect that number, so they would be able to turn that over as you look at the degrees and say, can we look into who this could, you know, potentially be? Um, and how do we keep everyone safe at that point?
I think this is a great step moving forward with just the way the world is today. So I really appreciate your time and energy looking forward.
Yeah, I really think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. With that, I need a roll call vote, please. Ed?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Barb?
Barb?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
And I say aye. Motion carries. Item number three is the Rossman Elementary Bleacher Replacement Proposal. As part of the capital improvement review process, Dr. Bowie is requesting the gymnasium bleachers be replaced. This proposal is presented now instead of February due to the time needed for product fabrication and labor scheduling, as mentioned at the November board meeting. The proposal is with the same company and bleacher product that was installed at Lincoln, which everyone really likes. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of bleachers at Rossman Elementary at a cost not to exceed ninety thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars.
A second.
Any discussion? Question, Dawn has a question.
Are there any safety issues existing?
I can say that it's very hard for people to get up and down. If you would ask my mother that, she would confirm.
And there's, there's no back support. It's open. Each section.
I think the hardest part is that there's no walkway. So you have to climb up the bleacher steps.
Well, they can go to the end of it and walk all the way in.
People generally sit all the way up to the end. I'll tell you at school events, that's, that's challenging.
Or ask them to walk that way.
So you're, first of all, the question about whether they're s- s- safe or not. I mean, as bleachers are installed and again, they, they need code as they're installed, when they're installed. Um, there are certain things as we get bleacher inspections that, um, are mandatory type fixes when there's, uh, repair and maintenance issues. But whether there's ha- handrails, I don't know if you've seen the, the new ones, Dawn, but, um, the, the new bleachers that went in, again, code specifications now will require certain run and rise for the steps. Um, different markings for how the steps work, the handrails, et cetera. But when you have existing bleachers and again, Ed is pretty aware of this, having, um, managed that department. There are certain things that don't necessarily have to be addressed. You can choose to address them if you want to. Um, but there are things that we don't necessarily have to address to bring things up to code. Having said that, how, how they operate in terms of how they pull in and out and how usable they really are for the people that use them. Um, you know, that's a measure of, again, the people that are tasked with pulling them in and out and using them and or sitting in them during our events. Um, they are, um, what we believe is original to the building. So again, we're talking about a piece of equipment that's going on fifty plus years. Um, it is our intent throughout our capital improvement walk around that we go in October um, with the administrators, looking at their buildings, what things can we replace? What things can we do as part of our regular maintenance, um, budget? We do have a, a slice of our budget that you guys approve. Um, usually in the springtime for our summer type updates and things like that. That might be a little bit bigger projects perhaps. But not so as intensive as like a referendum type level project. Um, and so I do segregate some dollars for all three school buildings for that. Um, the, the beauty of having a fund forty-six, as healthy as it's, um, been funded, is that, um, interest earnings off of our balance. Um, the intent was to grow that account to a size where it would be largely offset by the earnings that we make on the dollars. So that we can capture a bunch of our summer type projects with our earnings dollars and wouldn't necessarily have to go into either our regular budget or our, um, into the principal itself. So, um, again, Dr. Bowie, all the principals, uh, go through the list. They have a page or more of certain things that they want, um, to address in their building. They prioritize them. They go through them with Tara and myself. Um, and Doug and I make a recommendation, Ed and I before, um, make a recommendation to Tara for the things that we're going to do and then we bring it to you in February to approve. It's just that the timing with this one and knowing the process that we went through with Lincoln School, um, the timing is such that if we can make that decision now, partially based on our happiness with the way Lincoln turned out, is we can get this done hopefully in the summertime, which we intended Lincoln's to be done. And instead, we only got them ripped out in the summertime and then had to wait for them to be installed in November. So the, the timing piece is, um, what might be a little bit different. But in terms of the process and again, how we've allocated resources and how the priority's been, um, determined is largely the same process that we've taken for a decade or more, I'd say, good, going back to Mark's leadership and doing these building walkarounds and prioritizing items.
So this would have been presented to us in February anyways. It's, I mean, yeah.
So it's basically part of the capital improvement budget there. Cause we did that every year for how many years?
Yeah. So again, we've been fortunate to be able to allocate somewhere, you know, part of it depends on what items are on their list and what the priority is at that time. I, I've generally kind of set a guideline in my own mind to spend about a hundred thousand on each building. And again, if that's a bunch of painting and small things, fine. If they want to, you know, group a bunch of things together, that's fine. I mean, again, I don't use the building every day necessarily. We want to make sure that it's a usable building. And doing projects like this, that again, are decade-long kind of projects where we won't have to touch these bleachers now for some period of time. I personally like seeing those kind of projects done because again, that's one more thing off the list that we don't have to look at long-term. We have these buildings, again, fifty-four back to Lincoln, sixty-nine for Rossman, even now, again, our newest building being thirty-three years old. I mean, we want to stay on top of these larger maintenance items. Um, and so being able to check one off the list, I think is important to us. And Dr. Bowie's prioritized it. Out of all the things that you could do at Rossman School, this is the one that he thinks is the most valuable.
And I will, I will say that Rossman's bleachers were the scariest of any of the bleachers we had. Just the way they're from the construction from nineteen sixty-nine. And if you remember the original railings on the end, that was just them bars that went like this. Well, a guy like me could roll off the end, you know, let alone a child. And I was, I was relieved when we finally put, we finally put them, that, the railings that we, you know, at the end. I mean, but they're long overdue. They are kind of scary.
I would say Lincoln's are amazing. They, they look really nice. They, the functionality, um, really a nice enhancement. So I think that's a great choice that Dr. Bowie chose for Rossman. I'm excited.
Any other discussion?
Uh, is there any?
Is there any damage or marks on the floor from the existing bleachers?
No.
No, no, we've actually had always put plywood down.
But that's why there's not damage because you're putting plywood down so that the rollers are not damaging the floor.
There's no other discussion? Can we have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Barb?
Nay.
Dawn? Ed?
Aye.
I say aye. And Erin? Aye. Motion carries. Number four is the financial statement audit report for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Vesta CPA firm was contracted to perform an audit of the financial statements for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The firm provided an unqualified opinion that the financial statements present fairly the respective financial position of the governmental agent activities. Each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the school district of Harper joint number one as of six thirty, twenty twenty-four. That statement is the exact result administration and the board strives for with this audit. There were three additional documents, um, included in your packet in regards to that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four financial statement audit report from Vesta.
Second.
Any que- I mean, this is the same, uh, we saw a version of this earlier, I believe. This is just the final.
Um, I don't know that you saw, um, an earlier draft necessarily. Um, the Vesta has to, all school accounting firms have to submit their, uh, the district's audit and financial statements by December fifteenth. Um, again, it's a process, though the field work gets done in July for us. Um, they get as much stick, as many things as they can done, um, onsite as they can and get the, their testing done. There's always usually follow-up, um, that occurs as part of this process. They also have to certify our, um, aid figures and things like that. So there's things that they do throughout the fall here. Again, they, they do some work in September. Then their management levels review our financial statements. The part that takes the most time, honestly, as it relates to these documents, is putting together footnote information. So again, to present the information fairly to, um, investors of our bonds, for example, or the DPI. There's just a bunch of additional information that goes into those footnotes. Um, as I pointed out in my memo, there were two pieces and parts that, um, were updated for uh, this year that probably a little bit different than past years. One being the, um, the debt defeasance. So I had to make notation and put calculations in there for that so that, um, again, readers of the financial statements, including the investors, would have that information. So they're knowing what we're doing in terms of paying off the debt and what it saved us and all of that. Um, and then, um, since we've changed our plan to a self-insured health insurance plan, there's just different notations that they have to make and information they have to present as part of that too. So, um, if you were going to compare like the year prior's statements to these in the financial statement footnotes section, that those are the biggest things. But again, um, unqualified opinion doesn't mean that the firm is unqualified. What it means is the opinion that they're making is unqualified versus qualifying it with something saying, for example, everything is fair except for, or except for, or even worse, um, they have other opinions that they can offer, including, uh, we don't believe, um, we're not making any opinion, or even worse, that the financial statements are unfair in their presentation. So again, great audit.
Yeah.
Um, staff was good to work with. Again, um, fortunately for us, they don't send a bunch of trainees and weird stuff out like that. So, um, the staff are knowledgeable about what we're doing and know what to look for when they're getting our documentation. So they can get through it relatively quickly. Again, they spent three days here and it's onsite field work. The rest is stuff they can do outside, but.
There's no questions? Can we have a roll call vote?
Dawn?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Barb?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number five is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of minutes, bills, treasuries, report, and personnel recommendations. Is there a request to pollinate from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dawn?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Barb?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine is the board meeting reflection and feedback. So they included some from the last meeting, which is, I always appreciate. And don't forget to fill out your form tonight. And then item ten, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're adjourned. Eight oh two.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. Please enjoy your coffee.